All right, it is seven o'clock. Let's call an order, the April 4th work session. May 4th, thank you. I did not correct that, so make that change. I don't know what it is. It is May, thank you. In attendance, we have Mayor Southern, Councilperson.
Cots.
Are you serious, Ray?
I like to think of with Stacy. I just have like, she has Stacy. And then with Anastasia, I'm like, that's even worse. By the time I got to it, Cots had come out. Councilperson Wolf, Councilperson Martin, A, Councilperson Camera, Councilperson MacChamara, Jeffrey Welcheck, our financial officer, Jesse Schrempf, our legal counsel, and I speak, Mark River.
I'm here too.
You were there.
I missed it.
Yeah, I am Mayor Southern. You were in there, you were handing them the paper you handed up.
I wasn't listening.
And our administrative assistant slash person who runs the day-to-day operations, Mark.
And Eric was probably pulling in, would be my guess.
Eric Fisher seems to have been joining us shortly.
You know, from the record, back when work sessions were on Saturday mornings, Eric would bring gummies.
We should make him.
He'd bring wings now that they're.
I like that. Wings, I like that.
Well, we're gonna volunteer him since he's not here tonight.
I forgot they're on Saturdays.
I think that would be a beautiful idea.
Beautiful choice.
No, kidding.
Is this my view?
Yeah, wings.
All right, we'll start real quick with Councilperson MacChamara. Anything on stages that each talked about?
Not as far as I have. I mean, I spoke to him, he says they've got a candidate for SRO and possibly one more patrolman he had interviewed who is gonna make a final decision on this week. I've not called up with them to know the decision yet. Mayor, do you know?
We are in the process of potentially moving forward with that person. So it would be a part-time at this point in time. Because as you guys are aware, we do have an officer that is overseas.
Deployed, zero.
So we are, yeah. And we've been with Adam for a while and summer vacations are coming. So this would be a part-time. So as we get further down, you will see some legislation about, that mixes that in a little bit. It doesn't really have to do with him, but it has to do with some of that stuff, so. So yes, the goal is to move forward with a part-timer.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
And then that leave, then like turn it into full-time, what's the middle school fully open, then half-time, what's that?
Um, no, the SRO is something that is totally different. This would be a part-time person in the event that we had an officer leave or, again, at this point in time, we don't have. It's gonna be, my theory is it's gonna be next year before our deployed officer comes back. So, I mean, he's, so at this point, it's just, yeah, we're, we've been, we've been getting along the way that it is, but you know, with summer vacations and things like that coming, it would be nice to not leave the village shortstop.
Yeah, and I would more just thinking like one, or is Westerville Schools planning to have an officer at the new village?
Correct, so that's the SRO. That's the other position that he's talking about. That is a different position. That is the officer that Westerville will be paying, I believe approximately 50%.
Last I heard, yes.
Last we heard is about 50% of it. That officer is currently in the process of, we are in the process of trying to bring him onboard. Our boarding process is probably close to three months. From, you know, after they do all of their backgrounds and all of that kind of stuff. So at this point, we are in the process of trying to bring the SRO as well as a part-time person onboard.
That's her being item.
Awesome, well, that was, good thing to come out. Services JP.
Still working on some stuff.
And your preservation part of that, then?
Oh, um, well.
It's, I, I think it's, do we have that on the agenda for the chapter?
We have the chapter, yes.
Yes, so that's what this is for. Adam, if you want him to go ahead and just get it over.
Oh, we'll just do that there. I just thought this was like, oh, this is, yeah. You know, that's time there. So we'll take care of that new business.
Just so you're aware.
Brian, finance.
You have been nominated to bring the wings at future meetings. Wings? Yes. Cause you used to bring guns. Interesting choice.
Thursday night, it's time for.
We'll start reading, I think he said Jane first.
I can hear that.
All right, moving on to recreation and parks. Jason, I know you have some pool updates for us.
Yeah, just a few. Okay, things are finally, finally coming together. Today we were the freezer that we have to have. We have plumbing scheduled to put the sink in, the hot water heater. The drop ceiling's been installed. The floor has been painted over there. We are sending in the application for our fee license. We did talk to her because there were some questions about, did we have to have a commercial refrigerator? That's what the letter back door said and she said she's gonna let us pass on it because we're not getting anything in it that needs to be added temperature. So we're gonna get that scheduled. The sails, we just, we cut the holes, we just need to put the posts in, get that done. So hopefully that will be piercing. John's coming along with the pool. This, we get back to there mostly today. We have, the painting has not started properly yet, hopefully soon. Now that the weather has warmed up a little bit. But it is cleaned out, it's drained, all the dirt's out of it. The filter part has been removed. We are trying to get our pump back or our filter back that we have stored somewhere that we paid for last year as backup. John has cleaned everything up, looks good over there. They're looking good. The mulch has been spread over at the playground. I've not seen the landscape that people have there now.
Somebody gets in the kitchen. That's not it.
I've seen like the mulch and I've been putting a bit, so.
We can follow up with them, it's just what I'm.
All right.
Concession stand.
Concession stand, yes.
Employees.
Yep, we're gonna, that's, did you put that in the description?
Yeah, that right calendar serves in Rexon Park, but I thought, hey, they should go and talk about that, and please.
Okay, cool. So, so the ask has been that we separate lifeguards from concession stand workers because we don't have to pay them quite as much. So you don't need, we do need a paid license, which is $12 to get. I took it the other day. It's a two-hour course. Tells you to wash your hands and don't cross contaminate stuff, all that fun stuff. So we will show you next week some ordinance, is an ordinance?
Yes.
And ordinance around that? Because the pay will, it's not a position that we currently have due. I just wanna speak to this.
We will need to create a position throughout the village and create a.
The pay rate.
And the ordinance the mayor handed you on your left-hand side of the page.
Amending the employee handbook. To add the role.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then we'll maybe do some appropriations for the pumps for it.
So there will be two ordinances related to it. One for appropriations and one to authorize the concession stand workers.
Right now, the discussion I had with John was maybe we staff at 12 to 6 every day. Because I don't know that we've got many sales past 6 o'clock at night. So that seems like a good time. Unfortunately, we can't get hot dogs that fell through, but we are gonna get pizza pockets instead. They're already pocketed, so.
Why did the hot dog situation fall through?
Because the vendor, the manufacturer's not making them this year. They made them, they were prepackaged, they were frozen together, cause that's how we have the service.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And they did that specifically for COVID and they decided not to do it this year. At least at this point, they may change their mind. But right now, they don't have that fully at the pizza and stuff. So there'll be some new things added, the pizza, the nachos, the pretzels, which will be really cool. Anyway, that's everything.
I'm sure it's not.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, yeah. Any questions?
Do you wanna talk about the 20th at all?
Sure.
Just because you are doing it?
I just have a comment. I'm very excited.
We still have a goal of having it build on the 12th. I don't know how realistic that goal is gonna be, but I'm sticking to it at this point.
Just give it back.
Like you're thinking eight days right now?
Uh, yeah. As long as it's painted.
Your storage is all put in there.
Yeah, as long as it's painted by then. And the reason is because of all of the drama that we had right before opening last year. The last thing I wanna do is, and selfishly, I will be on vacation the week before it opens. So I would like to get it up and running and if pumps are gonna break, I would love for them to break the weekend here.
Barbara and I are gonna be there the 20th from noon to 2. Then take people who wanna sign up for the weekend before, that way they don't have to wait in line on open weekends at the pool.
So I'm gonna interrupt one more time and I'll probably do this all night. Does anyone have an issue with, as you can see, this legislation is just now going to go in front of you guys next Thursday. Does anybody have an issue with us at least advertising for the position of the concession worker even though, and I could not interview them until after? And I think this is gonna be an ask of you guys to pass this as an emergency because pool season opens in three weeks to create that position. But does anybody have a problem with us posting it on Facebook, advertising the position? And if you guys decide not to add the position, then we would not? And is that a problem, Jesse?
Jesse, do we have any problem with that?
Advertising for a position that we don't currently have, but they would pass Thursday? And I wouldn't hire until after Thursday.
Yeah, um, no, that's no problem. I think I maybe put some, could we just drop a little, like a footnote or something? Yeah, you know, the subject, council approval next week. I mean, nobody's gonna read that, but if we put it there, it'll cover it, but.
We have no issue. So as long as no one has an issue, we're just gonna post something on Facebook. John may be the person to hire him, but at this point, you know, we just wanna at least get the advertisement out there so we can maybe get a couple residents that are interested in it.
Yeah, that's, that's because I have a problem with it, I didn't have a problem with it, and everyone else.
I just didn't wanna do it without the position going back.
I don't think we're, I don't think it's in this legislation, but we have talked about maybe for next year.
That, that's the only reason we didn't do it yet is since it was for next year.
Yeah, is doing an assistant pool manager to kind of start someone else learning the ins and outs of the pool just in case something happens with John. They could also be over the concession stand, things like that. So we could split some duties up and whatnot, so something to think about for next year.
We definitely did talk about that. So that would be something that we would wanna bring up in budget if we wanna budget for that position as well for next year.
Okay, so assistant manager, we're looking forward to our next year.
That's a smart move.
Okay, Stacy, anything on streets?
I really don't have any updates except we're just moving forward. Everybody seems to be on board. The one resident that we didn't get ahold of, I think we got ahold of them very fine, it seems like. So I think.
I haven't got a resolution. Example resolution from the county engineer.
Okay, you haven't, you were talking to them, right? Yes.
I called, yes. Message, trying to get one.
Yeah. I had to call them today, they're gonna be down here. Oh, no, that was a different one, that was the Maplewood one more time.
I mean, we still want, you know.
Yeah, I heard the same, except Jordan Road.
Jordan Road, yeah, they're coming out to look at Jordan Road and they're coming out to look at the sewers at Cleveland Avenue and Maplewood, Cleveland Avenue.
Yes. I know I recognize my own screen name, but what was that one?
Mark.
All right.
Mark. One other item that needs to be on the agenda coming up. The resolution to notify the county engineer of our intent to use the permissive motor vehicle license fees that are setting with the county engineer for our use. I'm waiting, trying to get an example of a resolution to be passed that is acceptable by them. I have not got a response back from the county engineer yet.
And what project would that be used for?
Uh, that would be used for Minerva Lake Road. And that, that'll probably be one of several resolutions that'll end up being passed.
Is there a rate of seeing another municipality who has used that and then just quit?
What I'm trying for, yes. I think I got one.
Yeah, I think so. So, yeah, he provided some before and he's probably got one. And then also.
Okay, so that will be coming up sometimes. Thank you for that.
Same source.
I can get out Winchester's right now. I'll flip it to you and see if that.
All right, good.
All right. Going to our big projects that are always there, we just gotta touch on and move on. Community building, actually have a question on this one. Do we have a timeline for completion?
It's looking good, really good. I would say late August, early September are our realistic timelines right now. So we can start planning for. No major holdups, all looking good so far.
And I assume there's nothing else going on other than they've been asked to please secure the site when they leave?
Right, we had that, we had a conversation about that, you know, the other day. So that, they'll work on that. It's just a contractor leaves, leaves open, that shouldn't be working.
Yeah.
No, just, just the ins and outs of those little surprises during construction, but all those are workable. Or just so the councils are aware, there'll be a multi-month process of trying to get Columbia Gas. Also, that was a nice source to cooperate. They, they, it still, it still shocks me that this is coming back. But they told us that we have to, they're gonna try to bill us for a large line improvement along Minerva Lake because of our generator. And it wasn't just the bigger generator. They actually told our guys that was, the smaller generator would have kicked us in. And I haven't had a conversation with them yet, but my response to them is gonna be, so you're telling me that the first person on Minerva Lake that got a Generac is gonna have to push, put, you know, this, this larger line increase, it's not flying with me. So it's gonna be a while, we'll get it fixed, but it's just one of those utility conversations.
And then additional utility conversation. We will have on the agenda next week for first reading the ordinance that is gonna create our stormwater utility fees. This has been a long time coming, a lot of work on this with Mike. We've modeled it off the city of Columbus's program. You'll see it all, we'll, once you get it out and look at it, feel free to give me any questions we could talk about. I just wanted to make sure you knew it was coming. It also amends, shifts one up and one down, I believe, the sanitary sewer fees and the water fees in our code, so.
I would say it's four years in the making.
Yeah, it's a long, yeah.
It's great.
It's a long time coming.
It was, Kim Foley started with us years ago on this project.
All right. Uh, Lakes and Locking Pass, what are we, was, I don't know if something to do about Hill Valley? Last time.
He said you wanted the mayor. Oh.
Oh, I got it on my list. No, no updates. I mean, we've talked, but there's really, it's all in-house at the engineer and there are absolutely zero updates until we get stuff moving from the in-house engineer.
Yeah.
Not in, they're in-house right now.
I don't know how to speed them up, except, I don't think we can do anything except keep calling and stuff like that. I feel that gets.
Might have an opposite effect.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Trying to speed the people up in the city, calling them over time, it just slows them down.
So we're trying our best, we're doing our best. We didn't forget the end. We kept up.
All right, now.
For cost.
Down to the fun new one for today, down at the Outbuildings, in particular, electric hook up. We have two bids now.
It's on the list. Look at that.
Up around 100.
Yeah. They probably send the numbers out on Monday, so people can say, oh, put this on there, and then it can be there.
And I did, and I forgot.
Too many things going on this week.
There's way too much going on right now. Okay, yeah. As you guys know, we reached out to two vendors for, to get us some electric in a couple of different spots. One being the amphitheater, one being the, I don't wanna call it basketball court, I'm gonna call it park area. It was actually over toward, towards the shelter. And then the other ones are over in the lake areas. So we can hook up aerators, generator, aerators, generator, Christmas, areas and fountains and/or fountains. We have not decided on specifically an aerator or a fountain in each one. The goal is to put a fountain in the one that's, what's your street?
Black Sycamore.
Yeah, Black Sycamore, because it's up high, you can see it. The ones down low would be more of an aerator. Would we do anything to the Lily Pond? Maybe, maybe not, but I think it's, if you're gonna have the electric installed, it's probably smart just to still get it over there in case you wanna do it six months from now. That's the problem with everything we do. We get ready to do these projects and we get all of these stops. So 50 or 60-ish thousand dollars, definitely a lot more than I have even dreamt of, but it is what it is. As far as the amphitheater goes, the amphitheater, we do have the grant for. So I would assume that that one would be a really easy move forward, go-ahead one, because that would be. Correct, that's my problem.
No, it's, it's, yeah, we, we actually had some, we had a very good, initial estimates were large on the, when we were planning this out, large on the concrete standpoint. But after we revised kind of the plan for it, we actually got a really good bid, rather short of 10 grand. And so I'm still waiting on two other bids and it's been a little tough, but I should have those coming in in a week or so. So the concrete will go in here pretty soon and it's gonna be a very affordable, it's a third of what we thought it was gonna be, which is great. I do expect electric to hold at what we had last year when we were planning this out. That will be around the 38, 40 grand, but of course, it all is dependent on what's gonna get done down there. So we can give them a little bit of an extensive scope just to make sure we're conservative. But again, as the mayor said, we'll, we'll get a bit of that back on the grant.
Well, I mean, am I looking right that the.
It should have been broken.
Higher power electric, it looks like they're saying 16, 360 for the amphitheater electric.
Is that what they said?
Yeah.
I did not, I didn't scope that, no, I didn't sit down with those guys, I'm sorry. So my scope may have been more expensive at the end of last year and so we'll get a couple more bids for the electric before it goes in. Concrete obviously will be first and foremost, that'll come in, if we start using it, you know, as soon as it goes in, probably June, then it's effective, so. We'll do a little more research on the electric side. I think also having the concrete helps people plan that.
We have two different bids for electric, right?
Yes, there's higher power and then there was Bradley Electric, which is out of Westerville. Now, the next part to all of that, as you can see, those are both over $50,000. So depending on.
Depending on the, I guess, that's the first question we need to talk about here.
Correct.
Where do we want power? Cause the mayor, rightly and smartly, especially with higher power here, they broke it down to like, doing just this one, doing this one, doing that one.
And the other part, the reason to doing that is it will make the projects a lot easier as well as finance and if we have a grant and things like that as well.
So our areas are amphitheater, park area, we just call the basketball shelter house park, park area. That's a great idea. And then the three lakes. So there's a possible five places to put electricity currently, right?
Six.
I'm thinking, what is the sixth one?
And of course, I came up with that after it was too late. I remember if I were planning on putting the maintenance garage, there's no electric area. And totally didn't even think about that until what, when we were talking about it with you yesterday.
I mean, I figured it would be part of the building.
Totally, totally, but.
I mean, I would say that's like, let's worry about that one, just hold that in, hey, we're building.
Correct.
Yeah, that'll be dropped down with meter and everything, not too worried.
So yes, those would be the ones. And again, what do you guys want to see in this particular areas? Maybe you don't want electric and maybe you don't wanna have the ability to put certain things up there.
I mean, they're running the Quiet Brookdale Pond, which one is that?
I think it's the.
The White Brookdale?
Yeah, but I don't know if it's that one.
That's the total, isn't it? Quiet Brook is gonna be the one that the bridge. Cause green line is, green line is the.
Lily.
So actually expensive one at 13.5. The other ones all come in a little bit under 10,000 or at 10,000. I guess the question to the council, and I can just answer it, but we can talk about it. Where all we want electricity? I think we all want the amphitheater, definitely. I think we need the shelter house, definitely. How many lakes do we want electricity at? Do we want it at all of them, is that what we're saying?
So these, these are all retention ponds, right? They're all always holding water.
Right.
And the point of a bubbler or a fountain is to oxygenate the water to reduce other bad things. So, so you're weighing, you know, do we want to have some upfront cost to hopefully reduce maintenance later, right? Or, you know, keep it from getting toxic algae or keep it from, you know, all the badness that the deoxygenated water brings. And so for my part, I'm down with getting electric to all of them because even if in the short term, we choose not to put a bubbler there today, it's only gonna be more expensive to add electricity there later.
Right.
Right, right, okay, right, maintenance will be expensive later. The other thing is, is that electric, having access to electricity is always useful.
Right.
You will never find yourself in a situation where you'll say, god damn it, I don't want this electric here ever. Right? Because we may find a tool that runs on electricity that will want to run to that spot and instead of having 10,000 feet of extension cord, buying a portable generator.
Or borrowing from a resident.
Borrowing from a resident, right? All of those things, we'll just have electricity on the spot. So I would, I would strongly advocate, we just bite the bullet, right? And, you know, the only, in my opinion, the only reason not to would be, would be if we just can't fight, if we can't stomach the cost, right? So if we don't got the money, that would be the only reason not to.
And then just to make sure everybody's aware, none of this has been appropriated. None of this is very expected and I do wanna blatantly point that out. This might be something you guys decide, I'm, I'm not advocating for it, but for next year's budget. I know if you guys do decide to move forward, like Erica's saying, we would, well, after talking to Jesse, I don't know what we do to move forward, cause the last thing I wanna do is break things apart just to try to do certain things. And if, again, we want to add over in the amphitheater and all that kind of stuff, we would, this would likely be a lot of it.
Right, we have a bid that.
Let's just do it in a whole package, you'll pay for it, not for it.
And that's what, and that's what Jesse and I, when we had discussed it yesterday, that was the goal, was that we would, assuming you guys wanted to move forward with all of it, it may even get a little bit more expensive because like he's saying, you know, we may add a couple more, you know, once we get the bid put together, we may need to add one on this side. The one lake is huge. So maybe we put one on this side and one on this side. They did need, and I'm really saying this for the record, AEP actually met both contractors out here. I don't know if you guys know how the process works, but they met both of the contractors out here and they are pulling from the most affected area or the closest area so they didn't have to run it as far. So this isn't something that somebody just drew up. It was a lot of Brian's time, my time, meeting contractors, contractors coming back out, meeting AEP and all of that. So these are good numbers, but like I said, it's, it will likely, once we start making, you know, getting the fine lines down, it will probably go up a little bit. So be prepared for that.
So I thought when we were talking about budgets last year, that we talked about the fountains and 25,000 coming from that fund. Can the electrical come from that fund this year? And then maybe that's.
Or can we just pass a resolution?
No, there wouldn't.
Are you saying in the park?
Yeah, yeah, what we're gonna, what we can just do is say, we're, here's a resolution appropriating this money for this project. Even though it's not in the budget, it now is in the budget, cause the budgets are planned and the things come up. We just have to pass an audit saying, oh, we need more cash for this.
Is there $60,000 in the general fund to accommodate this is the question.
Yes, but I need to look at the park improvement fund. I think we had set up 75 grand for the shelter house and so on. And there's probably 45,000 for the bubblers, fountains and electric. The rest will have to come out of general fund. But yes, there.
But it's there.
There's dollars not appropriated in general fund that can do it.
It's currently unencumbered in the general fund, but it is.
Unappropriated.
Let's get bids and, and I'm not hearing anyone saying they don't wanna electrify the lakes.
I mean, electrifying the lakes is.
Sounds like we'll have to post no swimming signs.
All right, I think, I mean, until we get bids and see finals, I think that is, I don't know, our port here then.
Perfect. Well, we just wanna know that you guys are on board with that.
Yeah.
Some other resolution.
Let's be done with it.
So I think these were, I don't wanna say a couple months, like, cause hopefully these people will fit on it. But like, I mean, and Eric just pointed that out and there's, once we really get in there, that's the other one to do. We weren't hoping that this was gonna be much easier.
That's right.
Now it's worth 50,000.
Okay, and just real quick, everyone, cause I think I skipped over this when it was my, it was my fault. Legislation, the only thing we have, so we're gonna jump back up the agenda, cause I think I skipped over that. Is we have the third reading of, we wanna get our storm sewers camera and we have the third reading for we want office chairs. Anyone have anything to say on that? And then we kind. And then we kind of touched on, but didn't, uh, oh, four twenty twenty-three that the mayor handed us about hiring, changing. Does this also add the one part-time police officer?
So, yes, and I don't know how far in detail you actually want to go, I don't know if some of that's personal or not, between why we're adding.
Oh, I don't think we need to, the police department has a need for a part-time person.
But we're not, I I guess I want to make this clear, we are technically not hiring outside of, we have, I'm going to say it this way, stop me if I say too much. We have a full-time that's going part-time for a reason that will be going back to full-time.
Yeah.
So during that time is why we're doing, and we're also doing a part-time. We are technically not hiring all of these people. We are re- reallocating full-time to a part-time, back to a full-time, which doesn't really change the two, but at the time period that we have the other one, there's going to be a little bit of an overlap.
Yeah.
So again, we're not really hiring two, we only have one part-time officer right now. And as you can see, we're going up to three.
Yep.
But it's just a timing issue. Does that make more sense?
Yes.
Without giving personal.
Sometime by the end of the year, it'll drop back to two.
Correct.
And you plan to let us read it over its course?
Yeah, um, no, this is the one that we need, the concession worker, and this person, again, it's, I I don't want to say it's a personal reason, but it's a, it's a reason that this person's going part-time, but the other part-timer's going to be a little while, so that isn't really the rush, the rush is the.
How many, so, hey, the question to the board would be, are we okay just moving ahead? Does anybody have more questions? And if we are okay moving ahead, then you can. If people have more questions regarding whatever the police officer headcount flippity-flop that you're trying to say without saying is, we could separate the two, make the two resolutions, right? Because we have.
Put in two coordinates, just.
To deal with the. With the snack shack, and we have more time to deal with the police. But that's an extra piece of legislation that may not be necessary.
Your amendment, same thing twice.
Like they would be more comfortable separating them.
Right.
Because otherwise, you're going to be asked to do this in one piece of legislation, waving readings, passing as emergency, next year. Speak now, hold on.
The only thing is, is like, I feel like, okay, I'm moving that person, but I feel like it's for organizational purposes. If we break it up into two, it just leaves a little bit more sense, but.
Because you're opening a handbook, and, okay, we're changing this, 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 and this, isn't it open to change one?
We've done this same kind of change. Like, we've changed the 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 count of administrative assistant, or changed administrative assistant from X many hours, right? And added a police officer, we've done that before, right? It's an amendment to the same document.
All right, fine.
Okay, which brings us to code rewrite, yard code, I saw that on there, so I put it on there. I think Eric explained, and we figured out, the resident and I had uh upset that they couldn't plant creeping pine, or whatever little ground cover is popular on Facebook now, was looking at the developmental code for the new bill, which said it has to be this kind of grass or that kind of grass. It's not actually our code, which just says it has to be less than six inches. So that is off the thing, and now I have a feeling we're going to get to see home occupation, I'm going to have it as home use for work, because I can't remember the phrase, home occupation. Which is essentially.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, good, good. So it's a very short.
Picnic tables, sorry.
Uh, I think, you know.
Six hundred bucks?
Thousand.
Six thousand.
You know, it's pretty much.
I don't have anything appropriated.
Let's see how much they.
And then obviously, we have.
Concession workers.
Okay, great. Just don't forget.
All right, not my copy. To sort of instigate conversation, if you scroll up the signage part.
Right, there was some conversation.
Um, I think we should make sure that we are aligned with no signage, so, for example, the ninety-year-old guy who's a notary on Bride or Rose, who has a little sign under his mailbox that says notary, that would not be allowed.
A question, because they they do put those out, but I I mean.
It's it's a, it's a job, he's doing this home, it's a home occupation, and we are, we are expressly forbidding that. So I I I get the intention, I was part of the the body that kicked this up, but we also said we expect a discussion here. I feel like we we could hunt this in a way by revisiting our signage and say, home occupation signage needs to be X, Y, and Z, right? Within the character of the of the homes, architectural features, you know, no bigger than, you know, like three by two, one by, two by, two by two.
Three by two is just, you know, an example, basically the real estate sign in the yard. I mean, you you could, and notary signs are essentially, you know, right?
From that, it's a permanent, permanent structure, right? And so it couldn't just be, someone sticks a campaign sign in their front yard, right? It should be a permanent structure, meets the, meets the, or matches the architectural, whatever, the building. I'm not, I'm not hating on the not at all.
I I just want to make sure.
I agree.
I agree, because I remember we had this discussion a little bit, and and I don't, and I'd be interested to hear what the rest of the council have to say, because I think little signs can be regulated, it just depends what everyone's comfort wants.
Am I misremembering this, or the last time we tried to discuss signage or flags, we ran into a ruling or injunction from the Fifth Sixth Federal Circuit about that?
This is specifically commercial speech now.
Yeah.
Okay, I I get it.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Then advertise your business, not just say.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I was completely off base there.
Most of the segmental mind has said, I like that idea.
You don't have to make that.
He just, that was a way to say, hey, I want to agree. And make it sound.
If if anyone's got, what we could do is circulate suggested regulation for that, and see what people think. We have that ready by legislative committee.
Yeah, and so what, we want like, you are allowed to have a sign.
Right.
But it's permanent structure.
Right, or, you know, maybe permanent structure might be a bit much, but it needs to not be, we need to weigh.
A yard sign.
Right.
A political.
More more than a yard sign, less than, you know, a brick.
Sure.
Right, uh, and then, I think, two by two feels like about a good size. Uh, I would even be open to two by three.
Yeah, we can, uh, I'll present some examples as well, so what other places, you can see the pictures are helpful.
What what of all do we have, um, does there anything that stops me from just taking whatever sign I want, putting it in my giant front picture window? That's inside my house?
Inside your house.
Inside your house, so so but again, it's not the commercial language versus political speech, and I think that's the same thing. You can't obviously suddenly have a five foot by six foot, you know, if you got one for your window, a commercial sign that's advertising your your business in your house. I think that would be regular, so we we could regulate that, I believe. Because that's essentially a window sign, and we're not, we're not allowing window signs.
Right, yeah, it sort of becomes a window, it's not a, yeah, and you could definitely regulate window signs.
Right.
Yeah.
So because it's commercial speech.
I thought we did allow window signs as long as they were.
Over over in the commercial zones, okay? In the commercial zone, yeah, residents will. Get some regulation.
That makes perfect sense.
Uh, yeah, so so just to wrap it up, and then, you know, in some way uh complimentary to the architecture of the, though I I don't know how one would enforce that.
Right.
We could, having the language there should at least give people enough.
We obviously don't have an architectural board here, right? You don't think, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily want one, some board, but you can specify some specific.
Materials.
Materials, so you can specify even specific looks. We have two different zones here, actually, and you you could even set, I know, but I, will we make some suggestions?
I I'm just starting to feel like it's too difficult, right? I guess if someone wants to put a blue sign for their business on their house, that's going to have to stick there for a while, they're going to spend more on it. A crappy yard sign, I guess that could be.
Okay, good example, where, this is a good example, actually, you know, it's early in my career in Powell. I was trying to help the business owners out, because they were very anti-sign in the downtown, right? And and they have an architectural view board in the downtown, too. Now, what we said was, people wanted A-frames, they wanted, because it was more of a pedestrian-friendly environment, right? They were trying to do that. We gave them leeway, we said, we had the suggestions of pictures, hey, have an A-frame, and you can have a nice A-frame, you can have this, you know, it's it's allowable. Now, what most of the business owners did was buy the cheapest crap they could get for it, it looked terrible. So just as an example, that one went down.
Yeah, I think the difference here is that this is, this is in front of people's homes, right? Like, I I I am less worried, and I guess if they prove me wrong, and put nothing but turds on their houses, then we will point and laugh, and then change the rule.
Right, you can do that.
Or not, always be the empty house.
Yeah.
Um.
So yeah, so there's that. The next one, I had a question on, or I just thought it would be good for us to make sure that we discussed, uh, no business shall increase the rate of traffic beyond normal residential.
Right.
I, that's another one where I have no idea how we would.
How would that be interpreted?
Uh, no home occupations.
So essentially, under under F, we, yeah, we we have a couple things, we have F and G, all right? So F.
F, I get.
Limits number two, this can go up or down, depending on what the council's pleasure is, you can wait to see how it works, and you can reduce it, if it's not working, obviously. Um, but the traffic greater than the volume than normal, so there may be a better way to wordsmith that, I I would say.
I'd strike it.
You strike it?
I'd strike, I it's it's just, there's no way to ever, if we ever tried to enforce it, somebody'd say it's vague, or, yeah, it's just.
Well, yeah, the only way to enforce it would be if today we did traffic studies
Yes.
on all of our roads, and counted the number of trips per hour on all of our roads, and then we could enforce it with the.
And then came, and then came up with the, this is average traffic at noon versus average traffic.
Oh, true, true.
Because if I live down here, and it's four o'clock, I get a lot of traffic coming on Farview, like, I, there's no, unless I have the the best business in the world, I'm ever exceeding two elementarys and soon a middle school dismissal.
Maybe a way to do it, that, it's really hard to stop like the moving traffic, but there may be a way, and I I could look, I'm sure I have a few examples.
Well, the next one is no more than four motor vehicles can be parked at the.
That's.
I can say that as appropriate.
Yeah.
I was going to chop that right to three at first, at least, if not two.
Well, we count.
Yeah, I don't, all of a sudden, every week, there's, but I, and I.
We can watch.
I don't, chopping it seems dumb to me also, because any business you're going to do in a home, it's probably going to be some sort of legal or or whatever services, where you're going to be working with probably two people, who probably share cars, or maybe two groups of two. I don't see it as like, oh, six people are showing up at the accountant at the same time, because he just really wanted.
Some people do have employees.
It says here, customer, though, used by customers, it's a whole investment. That is F.
Hold on, what's your, what's your hypothetical?
My hypothetical is that this is so unenforceable.
No, it's absolutely enforceable.
Yeah, no, you would, you would say.
Well, yeah, because if you have a, if you, if you have an occupation, if you have a home occupation, you're registered. So right away, we know there's houses with, that are going to generate some traffic.
We have to, we have a file permit, number one.
Right.
Because we want to make sure the use is not, you know, something else, i.e.
My home occupation can't be cooking meth in my basement.
That would be an important one not to have, but even then, if you have a legal industrial use, that's not allowed in the residential district, and we don't want to allow it, right? There's any number of things that won't let people do, chemical, basing, don't be don't do that in the neighborhood, so, so that's it. We think, trust me, if there's someone doing something, the first people to call are neighbors, right? They will alert us if something's going on, smell, it's, you know, a lot of traffic, and then we will, we will sit on the house, and we will take pictures, information, we will gather data, and we will prosecute if necessary.
He is correct about that, trust me, the neighbors will call.
Right.
And they have concerns about it.
And the first step is obviously a warning, hey, this ordinance is in place, you are having too many people show up at once.
Just make sure you schedule your appointments such that.
Yeah.
Right, so if something's happening, we'll let people know.
So are we, are we just going to strike the the traffic one?
I say strike it.
Oh, but this one, yeah.
I I for, I get the intention, right? Like, I think the idea there is that if someone had a a cash-carry kind of business, and all day long, they had one car showing up every five minutes, that could be annoying, but I I don't know that we could do anything about that.
But you might just have a really popular kid that everybody wants to come over and see.
Yeah, what if you just.
For five minutes at a time.
Yeah, five minutes at a time.
Yeah.
I'm sure that happens on the floor.
There were occasional very quick cash transactions.
I said a really popular kid, I didn't say why he was so popular.
They were very occasional.
That's right.
Uh, okay, so B, I had another question.
Okay.
So, um, my concern here is, let's say, I am that attorney, and I convert my garage to an office space.
Yeah.
Right, but I permanently wall off, right, get rid of the door, and add an entryway. Now I have changed the outside appearance of my building or premises.
Very, it's a very good example, I like that.
Yeah.
Because the the thing in this particular case, the thing in this particular case is that would be, they'd have to get a permit from the board, they have to, everything will be legal about that.
Yeah, the building of it would be legal, but the home occupation portion of it, because if I wanted to do that to put a bedroom, that's, I could certainly use that.
I think that, yeah, we we can square that up a little better, I think the intent is that I can't add, suddenly add a mean to, as an example, where I can store outside materials, or try to highlight, I can suddenly build a shed on the side of my house. So I think, I I think we can say anything unpermitted, number one, but let me think through that with Jesse.
What if it, what if it's something, what if it's like, outside the existing footprint of the house?
That would be what I would be concerned about.
Yeah.
If it's something they can legally permit within the footprint
Sure.
of this, of the originally permitted structure, and I don't have, I I think interpretation. I would interpret that, that would be, that's a good example of where we can have an issue with someone not as familiar with.
Or even just cutting in another door, like they have a big family room, and they cut in another door in the back
Also.
as a business entrance, right? They put in a sidewalk, they cut in a door, and they.
Exactly, it's mainly within the footprint.
Yeah.
And you have to get a permit.
But it seems like the footprint is sticking, is the plate is stuck on rather than just changing.
Yeah, yep, definitely.
And maybe, is there, is there a way to lean the purpose of the change, the home occupation for the permitting? So that if you are making a change for the purpose, that may get different consideration, right? Because, you know, if you're, if you're making a change because it's useful for my residential use of my property, that is different than making a change because it's useful for the purpose of my business. And that may want different consideration in both the permitting process and permit approval process.
Yeah, let me think about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good example, I appreciate it.
Um, and while we're up on that end of it, so H, up there, it looks like planning and zoning, zoning, excuse me, wants to strike no truck, other than one van type truck shall be used in connection with a home occupation. Um, and home occupation parking on non-curved streets is prohibited. They're looking to strike that.
Uh, hold on, no, no, yeah, that that wasn't, that's in the old language, you're right.
You got the line through.
Yeah. Right, that's right.
I I guess I'm putting that up there to council, if anyone wants to say, hold on a second, you shouldn't be able to park your thirty-foot trailer with a backhoe sitting on it on my street.
If it's a legally registered vehicle on a public street, you can't really do that.
I just wanted to get it out there before people come and say, why didn't you talk about it?
All right.
And I say, because they own a big thing, they do their building, they have to park it somewhere, a man's got a, a man or a woman or a family or anyone's got to eat, and to do that, you got to work.
I think what you want to be rid of in that particular case was, there was a clause in there regarding council's review of particular individuals, right? It was unfair, review was part of it. And I said, you shall have a public notice and a public hearing to be able to do something beyond that, and that was a fresh strip in the state, too. Yeah, the limitation, if they had four work vans, and you was parking them there, I mean, as an example, you know, it it's where we get into the question of what's too much, too little.
Where is it, you're working out of your home, and you're basing your company out of your home, and you probably need to rent.
Right, we would agree at a certain size you would be to do that. And that was the concern, at a certain level, some, certain business models, yes. You need to, if I've got more than a couple of work vans, you know, we didn't want a whole bunch of people, cause I've seen this happen when we enforce it by the municipalities. A lot of people show up and get the vehicles and then off they go, you know? Um, and so what, at what stage is too much?
And then if you have eight guys working on three trucks, cause they're three man crews, and eight guys park their car in their boss's front yard, and each grab one of the three vans parked in their driveway. Or I guess three grab one.
That's where it's getting into too many vehicles and they're affecting the traffic situation, particularly on other traffic places.
Correctly, I'm wrong. We actually have, have or have that situation, I don't, I won't use the name of, actually I will. Over, I believe it was on Maplewood. Um, we had that particular situation with, I believe, the potential of three vans. That, I, I, I have no complete details, but that was one of the ones that was brought.
Yeah, that has recently sold though.
Okay. But it's.
Yeah, but it has happened before.
It has already happened before, so, and again, I'm just pointing out why that was in discussion. I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong. It's for you guys to discuss, but yes, we've already had that in the village to where you have three work vans, what's too many work vans? I mean, a, a parent has four kids and all four kids have a car, or a minivan or what, so where do you wanna draw the line? I, I'm just, I know it was, uh, we, we're getting complaints about it.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, we have multi-generational families and things like that that a lot of people drive and, I mean, that's not abnormal anymore. To have multiple.
People can't clean out the damn garages, so they can't use those.
Hey, I have three of my garages.
I have a personal thing, sir.
I have no idea that, not you, that I know of. I know, I drive up the street and see a lot of two car garages, three cars in the parking lot. I know they don't own five cars.
I do, I do like.
I got a two, five garage with two cars in the driveway.
They talk about company vehicles, right? These are company vehicles in this case that belong to the business that, that, that home occupation.
Four garage. Three's a crowd, so you gotta have two vehicles on one, but everyone has to be. Three, three hundred seats. Something like that. But that's.
That, that.
Two thousand eleven, three seven.
Yeah.
What about something green?
I, I saw what I was, I, I, four, four was pushed up as a, as a recommendation.
But four is just used by customers as a home occupation.
Yeah, right, sorry. We don't, we don't, we don't have the language.
Yeah, I don't see the language here saying I can't have three company vehicles. I can't start Rogers whatever service that we operate out of a van.
I think that was a slight misstep on the, I mean, I'm, the way I'm standing.
I'm a police party, a service, party killing service and I have four teams, each one has their own little van that they go out, but they all, the friendlies can park at my house. Cause I, I, and I want to keep those stupid things in my driveway, so it's annoying to get my car.
Yeah, I think the intention in the four from the previously discussed was four vehicles, you know.
At one time.
At one time, be, be a.
Yeah, so I'm saying there's your little language in here saying I can't have four.
So maybe to adjust the other thing to make it four vehicles and, you know, customer or company owned.
Yep.
Well, the need to, the kind of company owned of myself employed my car is that, um, well, you can get an LLC, you've done it. No, not mine do.
I mean, I think the hard part is you're trying to legislate the two or three that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, of course.
Which is the.
In order to enforce it, we have to have.
I know, oh, no. I totally agree. I think that's the hard part is, you're trying to figure out how to reinvent the wheel because you have three or four people that just wanna be difficult.
See, this is difficult because you want the average person to have their own business to start off with, not two cars, but do your thing. When you get to four a car, you should have your own spot, right? I mean, you guys wanted to say four.
I feel good you're exactly for you, cause I know you work on cars and stuff, so that, that was in four is appropriate.
But to me, four is like, oh my God, I can't, like, I can't put my garage.
I understand, you know, this is.
We're talking about four. We're talking about, I have a self leading business and I have four vans that go out every day.
This is like, like.
No, I mean, it's not, it's a change. If you schedule a surgical surgery in your garage.
I, I would love to see all of them.
I would say.
I'm not gonna be at a dinner party, you expect us to pay.
That's what I'm saying.
If you park, remember you're a customer now.
But if you, if you schedule five surgeries all at the same time, then yeah, they're, they're gonna have my cars parked out.
That's fascinating, we had.
I would say.
That's the term that does that.
I would say three.
But I, you know, we got. It would be like home medicine, I mean, it's doable, someone can do that.
And they say that the language is not specific enough and can be open to a lot of interpretation.
It can be, it can be, but we, we, we have nothing we can't work on. Now, I've, I've been through multiple municipalities, we've got vague language, interpretable language. You still have to have something you can take people to court on, so.
Do you have vehicles with signage on them that, you said your company vehicles?
And they'll just take the signage off.
But also eventually what would end up happening is if we have a problem, problem, resident, like this, not home occupier, we're gonna yank their permit at some point, we're not gonna remove it, it's on us, so then they're out, right? I mean, that's basically what our enforcement action is, cause it's a year to year thing, if they're. But that is, with that, like, we have to have a way to enforce it.
For a permit.
Exactly.
Those, I mean, we'll, we'll figure out. If we have legal.
That's why we're trying to make it fair and improve the language.
Um, it's perfect. Okay, we have a certain, uh, like say a certain P of a vehicle, like say if you do have a show, a backhoe. Say like, cause, and then this is why I, if there's a certain amount of width, or length, I'm sorry, in your residential neighborhood, you're taking over cars to get around that. But if there was like a trash or trailer law, something like that.
Big.
We don't really, on residential, you know?
I don't see us having that, cause we're getting into blocking, but I mean, you know, I mean, if you're bringing yourself in the size of a, you know, fifty three foot trailer. You know, that's pretty long. So it's gonna block driveways, it's not.
Yeah.
It's making it late.
What if, what if, uh, other.
Well, generally what, what other departments will say is you can't, like, in some cases, if somebody's telling you to say, you can't park commercial vehicles overnight on the street. Cause you can regulate this.
Yeah.
Maybe.
So if it's out of control, commercial, commercial vehicle, vehicle, or trailer, you can be very specific and say, you just can't park those on the street. So, that's one way.
Okay, I would say three's a crowd, that's where I wanna draw the limit.
Okay.
I mean, anyone else?
The council.
Three, four, what do you guys think?
Work vehicles.
Difference between the, for work vehicles, right?
Yeah, this is work vehicles with either company vehicles, commercial license plates, whatever, three of them. Cause if you get four, even in this kind of communities, we're small, like I feel like that's excessive. Three's a crowd. Cause that's four cars, or four vans, or even have their own business by that time, with an actual.
Yes. But three will probably shut that as well.
Yeah.
Like, I, that's the whole point of doing this is that that's what.
That's what you guys, anybody agree on that?
How do we feel about the size of the vehicles? Could we just discuss that while I was getting asked to discuss that?
I don't. Um, the only thing that I just kind of have heard is the size really is limited by space. Because you can't obviously lawfully block someone else's driveway. And so as long as it's not blocking dri, and then that means your size is, and you can't obviously block through traffic on the street. So it can't be a, you know, it can't be one of those trailers they used to haul the wind turbines around.
Which are awesome.
You can never realize how huge they are, cause they pass on the, the highway and you're like, like, crap, those blades are huge.
My thing, the other.
That doesn't represent.
One of the other parts of that is, is, and we were talking about this a little bit. There's really no difference as far as a full sized van or if somebody's driving a minivan, it's still taking up parking space along the road.
Yeah.
So, just because somebody's driving a really nice company car versus maybe not as nice of a work van, it's still.
It's the same thing.
It's still the same thing.
People don't like jucky looking cars, I guess, well, people don't jucky little cars as well.
Yeah, and, and the rules should be the same, three, three commercial and three company cars, whether it's a car or whether it's your van or what, but it's a work vehicle.
Yeah. Um, do you have some more, Brian?
That, that was all the things I wanted to make sure we touched on.
Did anyone else, uh, go over these and have the, uh, home occupancy, uh, rules and have anything more to talk about or?
Put up there.
That was not hand raised, that was a sun shade.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Um, Eric, do you still have any unanswered questions? Are you like, did you guys not notice that we did this and I wanted your information on it?
No, I appreciate that. I think we touched on a good amount of stuff and that's good. I'll get things revised and we'll have it in legislation.
All right, um.
The other item here was the swimming pools. If we can get that out, it'd be wonderful.
Uh, we can definitely do the swimming pools, I think, or, I mean, I know the tractor's gonna be a while, but we're only at eight o'clock. Let's take a look at that swimming pool since we're all here and it's up on the big screen. We can put that down to the pool options for the future. Everyone gets a little one in their backyard. Fit it right in the against, like it was supposed to be there.
In a lot.
No, I absolut, I thought about it actually when it comes.
So it's a potentially gate requirement when we have a pool, right? This is, and remember, this is Columbus, it's probably tried to adjust it and we took it from E and Z and it's up to us.
Right.
With state.
And remember the alarm part.
Right, and that, that, that'll match with what state code is concerned with.
It's been a while since I've had a pool, so I guess I can't.
Right. The, the, the trick has to do with that, you know.
Do we really want, okay, um, Brian brought it up, but now I just read it. Um, if we have a gate that auto latches and locks, it's don't, it's not that we need an alarm to sound when the door is open.
That, that's something that you can't, you can't, here's, here's the state code.
Okay, state, okay, that's it.
So, like, three, three year olds don't drown, this is all for, so like.
Here's a night, you keep a three year old, I'm on your edge.
Well, someone, someone got it.
Yeah, I, I, I imagine that's, that's probably not a great joke to make, but.
Probably don't make it that.
Right, so the, so the, so the permit requirement really is where it gets down to have to do with size of temporary pools, right? Because these, these pools get big now, you can get, you know, Walmart or wherever, and they're, they're all above ground type situations. Right, and that's where Columbus came down with theirs.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine.
So is there, anything in blue is new?
That's all, that's all stuff we were adding into the code, so. It's, it's, it's swimming, yes.
Do we not have stuff before?
Was that?
Do we not have anything?
We had standard old code that was in the building section, uh, you know, when they had, pre, predates two thousand eight.
They didn't take into account the fact that someone decided.
Temporary pools were not.
You can make a four foot pool out of nylon that's inflatable or has a thing that only costs a grand and you can put up in a weekend. But it's twenty feet across and four feet deep and costs twelve hundred dollars at Costco.
Right. Well, essentially this is, what this will effectively do is when people buy temporary pools, just so everyone understands, they're going to keep it to twenty four inches or less. In order to prevent having all the state code kick in, that you would, you would need, okay? So it will effectively lower those three foot and four foot pools that you can get, you know?
Super size.
Right, right, and so, and, and there's additional, if, if there's greater than twelve, so if you've got a between twelve and twenty four, so over, over twelve. Um, you know, little kitty pools that have little, little tubs, those are not covered by, those are what, six inches high or something like that?
Six or eight.
Yeah, something like that. But anything, what they did is they incorporated the twelve inches and you have to start, you know, at least, maintaining it according to your zoning rights. Side yards away, whatever ours may be, Columbus is usually theirs, obviously, that lane is the first one.
But if it's, uh, one of those little plastic tubs that we have growing up, you can put that in your driveway.
Wherever you want.
Get your hot dog and your beer.
Right.
Or something like that.
Right, you, yes, you can. We wanna make sure people don't inundate, the last one, they don't.
Is that not only fifty four inches? Is there like a restriction on size too? Cause like I can see with a big old twenty four inch depth, but like.
Twenty three inch depth.
Twenty, sorry, twenty three and three quarter inch depth.
There you go.
Pool, but like, it's like a twenty foot long one.
Well, I don't, I have not seen a twenty foot long one for sale, so you're restricted by what you can buy in this pool, right?
I can jury whatever I want.
You can make your.
Yeah, but the, the thing with the depth, I think, is more, when the three year old falls into a two foot pool, they can stand up. And as long as they can stand up, they don't drown.
Maybe.
They got a better shot.
They have a better shot of not drowning.
Three foot, not so good.
Yeah, alright.
That's the idea, because.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, twenty feet of two foot water isn't necessarily more dangerous than five feet of two foot water.
And by the time you can, I imagine by the time you can, probably not sure, that by the time you can crawl up the three foot side of the thing, you can probably stand. Little babies might be really good.
Well, three people need a ladder suit, they're on ladders, that's, you guys got the little stuff. And they can't get that out sometimes.
Again, if you're five and a ladder, you can probably stand.
But I'm not quite understanding that, is the under zoning restriction of, people in depth greater than twelve, greater than twelve inches.
Yes.
Must be, okay, I got it.
Must be located.
I got it, I'm sorry, I, I missed the word greater. I read, I read it like ten times.
What, what this prevents happening is obviously people setting up the temporary pools of size in their front yard, but then they gotta put a, and if, they make, they make a line with those fences. You can get temporary fences, I've seen people do it, but then it's a whole lot messing with front yard, so.
Alright, so, one thing, so I have one of these temporary pools.
Right.
Um, I do. Um, so, like, okay, so it says the door must open away from the pool, right, is that going to look there?
So, so they can't bring in.
So this is under where a wall or dwelling unit forms part of the required barrier. Um, and direct access to the pool is through a door from the dwelling. So, our house is.
Opens up, right?
Yeah, so we don't have a back door, we have a sliding door.
Right, which is the same, which is the same thing in the code, I believe. So, sliding door, so it, it would need to be, so if you had children in the house, typically the way they set those up is there's an alarm that beeps. You know, people will build any ground pool or above ground pool and you get it fenced, the code, you know, typically speaking, there's a book, gate that'll make an alarm in the house. And then if you open the door, it'll react to it, whatever door that is, sliding, otherwise it will have to make an alarm.
You're talking about just like a twenty dollar beep thing, I mean, like a little insecure, okay, we have that.
Yeah, and, and this is, a lot of this is for children, see, if you, if you don't have children in the home and you.
Are you, right, Jason, were you hung on the must open away from the pool? Yeah, and self closing and self.
This sliding, well, this sliding door doesn't open away from the pool, nor is it self.
Self launching or self closing. Yeah, I. So then would I not be allowed to have one?
I think it's access gate though, no?
Well, we.
No, it's a, when the wall dwelling form, so when part of your fence is the back of your house. The door shall be equipped with an alarm, the door, screen door is open.
I, I would have to check with the, with the CDO somewhere on.
I would say that doesn't have to open away from it.
I don't think it does either.
Because the thing is, access gates must open outward from the door. Your home door is not an access gate, it is a door into your house, it is not a gate on a fence.
That's a, that's under the.
The door must open away from.
Yeah, that's my point, dude, hey, hence, you're starting back door. Now, it does say you do need to put, well, you do need to put a chirper on there and anytime someone comes in and out, it needs to chirp.
Back up, back up, it says one of the following would be, Jason, it just says, it's, it just says one of the following would be provided. One, you have an alarm on it, two, it opens away from the pool, and then you pick one, you don't have to go.
Yes, that's pretty good, it's exactly right.
Just pick one or the other.
Oh, so it's one or two, it's not one and two?
There you go.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Gotcha.
So beautiful. Thank you. Yeah, it's fundamental.
But you're gonna have to put an alarm on your door with a, with a code, a little touch panel that can turn it on and off apparently.
Doesn't say it has to work, it just says it has to be quite long.
Touchpad used to deactivate the alarm.
Yeah, you don't have little one, just. Four, ten.
I'm just reading the rules.
Do we want to, um, point one there? That says a touchpad used to deactivate the alarm shall be mounted at least five, six, four inches above the floor, which seems to say I have to put a touchpad. I can't do my twenty dollar chirper and say, if a touchpad is installed to control the alarm, it must be at least fifty four inches above the floor.
So, again, we can find out for you if there's leeway that we can adjust what is.
If that's a high.
Yeah.
If that's a high, then we have to put.
Yes.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's a, that's a question to answer. Um, right, I think if you're, if, if, if are imagining that the twenty dollar chirper is you coined it, right, I mean, they just, I've never had one, but I imagine a little button on it to, to. but I imagine a little button on it to, to...
I imagine they just have like our, all the doors in this school building have, if the door is open, it goes ee, until you close the door again, ee, and it cuts off. And it's just the, the circuit when it's open.
I bet, I bet you they have a button on it to do that, because what if you want your door open?
I know.
All day to move if it's not open.
It's wanting to know if someone's sneaking in the back room.
Well, that's schools, but I think these are the same.
No, but I'm just saying that they, they do make those. I mean, the idea of it is, of course, notify people when someone goes out. The reason you would have to think that you go off is it's not just beeping that you can miss, cause you're running water, washing your hands, it keeps beeping. And then you say, oh shit, someone went out, and then give the kid before they smell like poop or what have you. I mean, that's why it's in there, I don't know that I agree with that, but I can see who put it in there.
I don't think we can argue this, because I don't think we have an option, so I think you should just...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Well, actually, if it only affects our community, we could make a home rule argument.
I think the only thing that we can do is we can be more restrictive and not less restrictive.
I was trolling that, so you know, that was totally a troll. Pretty much anytime I mention home rule, it's a troll, okay?
I'm going to lose my mind, please move on.
No more chirping for you.
I swear to God.
Alright, that's all I got, uh, appreciate it, well, thank you for your time.
Okay, I think that takes us basically down the new business and the tractor.
Wait, hold on, we didn't talk about, did we talk about like Airbnb's?
Oh.
We did, did you?
And we talked about putting it on the schedule and it wasn't on the agenda.
We can have it on the next...
When did you email me that you wanted that on the agenda?
I told you to put it on the agenda last time you had.
She did mention that, of course.
And you wrote it down.
I wrote it down, but I lost that paper when I sent out the agenda on Monday, I said, this is what I have, if I'm missing anything, let me know.
And then I think about that too.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out what I can do next month at the work session.
Why can't we just do that?
Cause he has no...
There, there's a lot, Airbnb...
Well, I will say he didn't have that tonight, twenty-three minutes after the start of the meeting, so I did not have time to adjust the agenda at that point.
So I, I...
You shouldn't have lost the paper, I was counting on that.
So Airbnb regulations is dynamic at this point, I would like some, bring whatever together with Jesse's current to some degree to have a discussion. And educate myself on it, cause it's, it's new, newer stuff that's not...
We, yeah, we briefly, briefly talked about it before because it's something that I totally agree that it needs to be talked about, because I'm, I'm gonna say for the record, I'm not a fan.
A, a fan of what?
Airbnbs. Short-term rentals in properties, and all I can say is Google it.
I think, oh yeah, yeah, there's, there are, for your...
There's ways to do, yeah, there's, if you're gonna...
I, my, my supposition in this is that any efforts to enforce any rules that we have will far outstrip the benefits that we get from having the rules. But now, is that a reason not to have the rules? I don't know, because just having rules are preventative in their own measure, but who's, who's gonna be watching the Airbnb listings?
You'd be surprised. Your neighbors, the neighbors.
Except the, except the addresses aren't, the addresses aren't posted in the listings, so then you're gonna...
Okay, if I, I'm gonna know if somebody has an Airbnb next door, there's parties every day, and there's nothing I can do about it.
Yeah.
You're all going to sell to your neighbors that are in a party every day. And what can be done about it, it's just saying, no worries, ordinances, you can do with anything else.
I think there's, there's definitely been plenty of concerns with Airbnb's, even locally, um...
I've heard more stories about it.
Well, because they rent eighteen-year-olds, and I'm not saying eighteen-year-olds, there's a reason hotels tend to rent to twenty-five and older, twenty-one and older, um, but a lot of them... Yeah, I mean, and again, not, but Airbnb is definitely more flexible to rent, um, and I say that cause I've seen leaders that are able to rent Airbnbs. And sometimes you have like after prom parties and things like that, and that can potentially lead to larger parties that, um, don't go well. And so, a typical Airbnb, I don't have an issue, you know, I wouldn't have an issue with that, my sister-in-law rents them all the time. So, you know, she likes to rent houses instead of hotels and she, of course, likes finer neighborhoods, not, you know, that's what she wants. She would rather have something in like a neighborhood like this, and that's what she would do. So I don't think that they're the worst thing in the world, but the problem is, is that's, you don't always get my sister-in-law.
Yeah, we have trust in this.
So yeah, how much can you regulate?
Okay, follow-up question would be, is renting your home on Airbnb a home occupation? Because maybe, maybe, maybe it's easy enough to, or act that into that. And then we limit the number of cars, so you can't have after prom parties unless they're all getting dropped off. You've gotta follow our existing ordinances, you've gotta, right, it's a business that's happening in the home. We should, I would be like, unless there's some state law I'm unaware of, be able to make that required provision.
No, people typically get to use their homes for the highest and best use. And highest and best use could be that I choose to rent my home, you know, on a monthly basis to somebody. The Airbnb is interesting because I, I, I find the suggestion productive, I think we can look into that, I, I like it, I think we might have more regulatory ability.
Right. Which we should have the ability.
Right, right, I'm, I'm with you, I, I agree with that statement.
And I feel like that's the easiest way, I, I don't know, I don't, I'm, I am not aware, but I feel like that is the easiest way, the easiest...
Can we do like New Albany's policy and Columbus's policy, like, cause I'm sure...
Well, I, I don't know if, I, I have to read, again, educating myself, I need to read a couple of those. I know, I'm more familiar, I was telling Jesse, it's amusing to me, because I have, I have client. And he's very successful in Upper Arlington renting Airbnb's.
That's great.
And then they, they tried to, they tried to, I don't know what you're saying, for one moment, please. Uh, they're, they're trying to regulate it and they just find another way to get around the regulation. But I like Brian's suggestion because we might be able to be more strict.
Forceful.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, so we'll, we'll have to look into and educate ourselves on that.
But yeah, I, I'm not, I mean, there was just a lot of...
Write it down, this is important, it needs to be on your, write it down, this is like top of my list, that we need to find out what everybody else is doing. And then make it lock tight before anybody gets any ideas.
We will, we will have it on, uh, Mark, you can put that on the next agenda, right?
Yeah.
Good, we'll do it.
I'll, I'll, I'll remind you, Casey, this is...
And I will send it out on Monday before the thing, if you're not there, feel free to say, hey, not forgetting thanks.
Hold the microphone?
Yeah, yes.
Have you turned on the TV? We all started watching, man.
Sorry, sorry.
What do you got going on?
Two hours of Phil Buster, you guys ready?
Ooh, two hours, that's not good enough to go to work.
Um, I got, I'm gonna talk about some recent concerns, a lot of you guys already know this, so it's just gonna sound like a broken record, but just kinda go along with it. You guys got questions, I'll ask this just quickly then, cause they'll probably answer them. Um, so, I'm gonna call these recent concerns, safety issues, whatever you wanna call it, um... We have trees down by the dam getting ready to fall, um, they're gonna maybe, I don't know, cut down or something. And you can see how it's a ruin, and this tree's gonna fall. There's some downed trees as well. Um, pathways. More downed trees. Same one. Okay, uh, pathways, especially the one by the bridge, or I should say, uh, under that tunnel, the bridge. You can kinda see how the water has risen very high and caused the, uh, path to come up. But the bridge seems to be, you know, pretty much solid intact, I'm not your engineer, just saying. Um, we have erosion happening down by our dam, a lot of you guys already, like I said, you probably know about this. The pathway that goes around the side of the dam, this whole side is starting to cave in. Um, so this will probably need to be fixed somewhat sooner than later. And by the way, I know some of this stuff is gonna have to be done by the engineers, um, but at the same time, some of this we can fix ourselves, I'm gonna get to that. Um, this is one of the bridges, the dam is actually right over here, this is the first bridge. Uh, you can kinda look here and see that the erosion is starting to give way to the concrete, but the bridge itself has been here longer than I've been here, so that's the good news. Closer, kinda picture of what's going on and how that, uh, creek, river is eroding, straying river, I'm calling it. We have some of our creeks starting to erode and cause like little lake effects. These can be easily fixed, and I'm gonna get to that solution a little later. This is another kind of an angle, I should be standing over here, but this is starting to get pretty big from the creeks. Um, you can see how the rocks are starting to fall back into the lake. And some of the rocks along with the bridge are starting to fall back down, it'd be nice to pull these back up. Um, the tops of the dams, this is gonna be engineering, obviously this is a safety concern, cause you got the dam just falling apart.
Do you have a warrant yet on things like?
That was left that way intentionally.
Yes, yes.
Why is that?
But, uh, now, you know, it does seem to have, now, eroded beyond where it was left, but it was left with that unfinished edge intentionally.
Okay.
We can trash that.
Okay, so, these are obviously some concerns that are gonna be coming up in the future, sooner than later, I'm sure. Um, some are more serious than others, but we are aware of them now. Um, so solutions, one of the solutions is we can hire contractors, so we can hire engineers to fix things, um, and get out searching to fix our problems. Or, we can find a viable solution to be self-sufficient, uh, to fix any problem that may arise. Uh, and this is our savings of money, no, this is not spending money, sorry. Uh, that's what this little picture is here, let's show, um...
That's the tip funds.
Right. Uh, in order to do that, we're gonna need a, a heavy piece of equipment, I suggest a realistic size tractor, um, a front loader, backhoe, one that will not be pushed to the square inches of his life on day one. Uh, we're four hundred and thirty-two square feet neighborhood, oh, I'm sorry, I take that back, we're four hundred and thirty-two acres of a neighborhood.
Yeah.
We have about possibly one and a half, two miles of pathways, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and we're about a ninety-six-year-old neighborhood. Uh, nineteen twenty-seven, River Park on the subdivision, and we're officially incorporated in nineteen forty. Um, but the solution to fix these problems and future problems that we may arise is to get ourselves a tractor. Okay, so... Oh, I wanna do this, I think we're gonna save a lot of money, like, if we figure something like this costs seventy thousand dollars, I'm just gonna throw out a number. I'm serious, yeah, this is...
Really?
This is, yeah, this is fifty-three, something like that, I have some vice votes from this, um, sixty-five, sixty-seven, something like that, yeah, that would be even more cheaper. Um, this is the Kubota, uh, L forty-sixty, it's something that you would use in this size of a property. This is something that, if we did, I'm just hypothetically saying, you spent seventy thousand dollars on this, and you divide that into ten years, that's seven thousand dollars a year.
You're gonna say seventy thousand dollars a year.
I'm sorry?
No, you play Magic.
If you had a, if you had, say, it's about seventy thousand dollars and you use it every single year, that's seven, that'd justify the cost. Seven thousand dollars a year for something like this. Now, so some of the things that I talked about, how much do you guys think realistically would cost the place walks along those little dams?
Well, my question is, how's that thing gonna fit on the path in order to get down?
It'll fit on the path.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, I'm gonna tell you right now, like, if you hire somebody, they would either bring an excavator, or they're gonna bring something like this, but a hundred fifty thousand dollars is way better to do real estate type jobs.
Right, but so, so among the jobs that you laid out, right, moving the rocks, moving the trees, right? Those, those I believe that we could do.
Right.
But everything else that you showed us is not things that we should do. That is not, right, so, any, any kicking around with a bridge should not be a...
Right.
Not, not unless, not unless we have an in-house engineer, and not unless we have a, you know, we, we would need to professional up our staff, not thanks Brian, but we would need a professional up our staff the whole crab tongue, because if I let a village employee fix a bridge that we expect people to stand on.
See, that's the thing, I'm not, just don't fix it, any kind of bridge, I've talked about, but preventing erosion, say the bridge that we have, if we don't save them, we...
All of that erosion on that hill?
Yeah.
I don't think we, we have the staff to do that.
I'm not even, I'm not even talking about, I'm talking about like a small, micro, where those little bridges are.
No, no, there's no such thing as a small, little bridge.
Small pathway bridges.
I think what JP is saying, if we have this, we could put boulders in it, drive them down there, and drop in more riprap to try to help. Cause that's all we can do to halt the, uh, erosion of those things, is drop the riprap.
Virginia creeper helps with erosion.
Helps, but it's not the same, it's a completely structural material, this thing.
Alright. I'm gonna get to that, so not talking about the dam, those things are engineered, but those small bridges, if you contracted the company coming, and you're either gonna A, replace that bridge, or they're gonna do an inspection for that erosion, cause those bridges are well intact, they're still good. It's just the, the stuff is like eroding around it.
Okay, hold on, hold on. How do you know those bridges are still good? What investigation, what qualified investigation have you done to make that, to make that claim? So please let's not make claims that, what am I here on the mandor, you shouldn't speak to us, no.
We could use it to pick up the downed trees and that green space area.
Ab, absolutely.
We could use that.
Move those boulders and roll them in the street.
For mulching, how much was that mulching project, anybody know? Anyone?
Eight hundred dollars. Well, the mulch was eight hundred dollars, but we paid, I believe, two people, three people for probably two hours.
Okay, nevermind. How was that about the contracts that they have along with, like, ball around the...
All that, um, for the entire year is ten thousand dollars, but that's mulching, that, that wouldn't, I don't think that's gonna do any of that.
Yeah, that's, that's implied in...
That's a handler. Edging and mulching.
That's handler.
Here's the thing about this, like... The only way this would even apply is like, it has to benefit the neighborhood cost, like, you know what I mean? Like, you have to be able to have that saved, so if we're saving up to seven thousand dollars a year, like, doing things ourselves...
You just said we're saving seven thousand out of nowhere, seven thousand is a, we're spending seven thousand dollars.
He's trying to justify that.
Oh, well, he's like, we said, we're spending. Okay. Yeah. But, come on here, did you take up the trees that are down there? That would pay for, for one year, the trees that are down, I'm pretty sure by the end of September.
We do pay, we do pay Mr. Oldman quite a bit to come and clean up, pull trees out, all the time. Take up the year, all kinds of heavy loads.
To make the case, I think, getting a better handle on, anyway, I, I wanna make sure you know that I am not in any way opposed to a tractor.
Right.
I think that it is a tool, and I think that we have uses for said tool.
Right.
I don't think of the ones that you identified.
I would, well, right, but, but we can definitely...
I'm trying to finish all this, um, so the whole point of buying a tractor to say, some of these things that we can't do, some of these things we can't do, some of these things for a ninety-six-year-old neighborhood, they're gonna start to break, we're gonna need to repair it ourselves. We can be self-sufficient with something like this. Now, we hire somebody, you're gonna be paying that person for the operator, the skills, you're gonna pay for his truck and the backhoe basically to fix, you know, repairs.
I, I think we need to do a, I think we need to do a better job of identifying the jobs that we think we could do in the house.
Mulching.
Okay, so let's, let's start addressing those plowing. I, I don't think this is a tool plow.
On the screen, in case Glenn decides to get you again like he did for one year.
But, right, so, you take, you take me and a plows for the front end. Well, then, so that, is that included in your seventy thousand dollar estimate?
No.
Okay, so then we need to have that.
Fine, let's, actually JP, why don't you get to the end of this, and then we'll get our questions on it, and... Cause he did say, once he gets to the end, some of the questions will be answered. So JP, go ahead, you have a floor here.
I'm just trying to think about ways to be cost prohibitive in the neighborhood, how can we save money by investing in a tool to fix the things ourselves? Mulching, we can use it for mulching, rocks, we can use it for the pool parking lots, we can put down lots in the future. Um, digging holes, Brian, you wanna help me out here, digging holes, we can use it to grab, pull down trees that aren't quite all the way down, cause it's supposed to be down, but we're trying to tie them up. But if they're already leaning halfway, this thing can just push it over and you can just chop it up. You can grab it, hold it in the air, chop up pieces of wood, uh, we can rent attachments to be, bring ourselves in-house. And the great thing about having a tractor, I thought this might be harder to operate, I thought it might need a special operator, but you gotta think, there's still these farmers, like, anybody can jump behind the wheel of this thing and operate that.
Are you just, are you just?
They're one of those farmers that's almost being lied, and yet they can figure this out. Okay, if you can operate the zimmer, then you can operate this. This is very easy, it's basically joystick-driven. If you can drive a car and operate the joystick, you can load with the front loader, or switch it to be using the backhoe. But again, seven dollars more a year for a tractor opposed to whatever's gonna cost someone else to do that? That's my point. I'm not saying this is the one solution for everything, but if it's benefits in the neighborhood on a ten-year term, or we can save us money, it might be.
So, what I'm gonna say about this, and it's kind of what came up the other day. Um, this is actually just a beautiful, wonderful example of putting the cart before the horse. Um, I agree the village probably could right now put this to use. I also agree the village right now doesn't have a place to store it, doesn't have anyone to operate it, cuz we have Brian, who's great, but it's not like Brian's just like, oh, thank goodness, now that I have this tractor, I can do all this extra stuff. Because before, I was just sitting around going, I'd love to do this and that, but no tractor, can't get it done, I'm just gonna wait. No, he's keeping busy now. He, he's, he's doing everything he needs to. Now, will he one day be the guy who drives the tractor, cuz he's the head of the department, and the sixteen-year-old gets to drive the lawnmower while he does that, and he's walked around? Of course he will, that's way cooler to drive.
I wouldn't put any pressure behind a piece of heavy equipment.
But, you know, until we have ability to have, someplace to store it that's not even under a tarp in the community center parking lot, until we have actual employees to use it, cuz most of those jobs we're talking about, having that will make it easier, but at the same time, okay, we can go out and do trees, not with just one person. Whether you have a tractor or not, you're not gonna go out there, pick the tree up, hold it, cut it, let it fall, put it down, get back into the thing, pick it up, you need, okay, someone's in their cab, they get the tree ready, you cut it, okay, and then you choke up on it a bit, however you want it. If you're good at it, you can do that. And, and so, we, we don't have the staff or the storage for this, although we do have the need. That is my thought, that was my thought the other day when we were starting to like really push it, I said, wait, wait. Yes, we, obviously we could use this. We could, and now some of the savings aren't gonna be huge. Doing the mulch just means that whatever we're modeling mulch for and puts in a big clump, we can scoop it up with the thing and drop it into the thing. Instead of doing that, how much are we really saving by not having three teenagers work for three hours?
You're still gonna need at least one of those teenagers.
To rag.
Right, so, so we, we need to be, when making a cost savings argument like this, A, I think we need better math at the front, right? Because we haven't included, A, we don't have a good, a real estimate on the prices, we're all backing on the low math, right? We don't have, uh, we haven't considered opportunity costs or any carrying costs, right? Because spending seventy grand today means we can't spend seventy grand tomorrow, so we have to include that in the estimate.
And that was.
Hold on, hold on, right, so there, there's all of that, right? So I think we need better math at the front. I also think we need a closer look at the jobs we intend to do in-house. Because, again, I am very hesitant to say that we should be bolstering foundations of bridges ourselves. That scares the bejesus out of me. I think we need engineers to look at bridges, I think we need then professionals to set foundations of bridges that our bridge foundation centers, like, I don't think shoving a big rock under a bridge sounds like the right solution to me. And, and I would, I would probably need to be convinced of that.
I'd say it's more of like. Hold on, a tool for emergency situations too.
But, that's, like, that's a lot of money for an emergency situation. Next, right, so, so once we have a better.
If you have an emergency, you can probably write one of these for the weekend for.
For an emergency situation.
For a couple grand, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they sit out in the parking lot, blows up, yeah, maybe not that big, but close to.
Right, but sometimes watering will require overtime naturally.
Yeah, taking, taking a look at the job that we really expect to do ourselves would allow us to better scope the tool to buy. So then we can decide if we need, you know, the baby, the, the mama, or the big papa, or which, which one of those, and then we're making a smarter purchase. We are understanding the scope that we intend to use it, so then we can make good choices about when to outsource and when to do it in-house. Because I do agree that there's potential savings to in-house more of these things, but we need to be smart about those things, we can't just wave our hands and say, you will buy. Do it all in-house and save all of the monies, because we won't, right? We're never, we're not gonna.
But if we can start to be more practical than thinking towards the future, right? This is gonna be some, you know.
I'm not trying to lay on the things that we should be thinking about.
I think this is a wonderful discussion to have, once we have someplace to put it. Let's get this, um, you know, maintenance facility built, and then we can discuss all the cool things that we can put that'll save us money down the road, but right now, we're just exercising in.
I mean, we can, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, right? We can make a plan, so that, right, like, we can make the plan so that we buy the right thing to put in the, in the shed, you know, the, the day after we cut the ribbon on the shed, we can roll in the appropriate tractor. Like, I don't think that is impossible, but.
We only have a year and a half left to spend this tip money.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, I don't think we need to worry about that, because if we can get the lake started in a year and a half, we could spend ten million dollars on those lakes.
Oh, I can build a state nature for ten million dollars.
We could, we could get those lakes, like a nice twelve-foot channel, get some, some cats in there. We could put a dock.
A bridge.
A bridge, we could put a dock down into it to a little kayak launch. Like, if, if we're worried about, like, what if we don't spend all this money?
Oh, right.
Just dredging those lakes and getting them out, crappy is gonna be a million and a half.
And I'm thinking it's probably gonna end up being more than that.
Yeah.
So, just really quick, I had JP do some of this after, you know, we had all done, we had all talked about this. You know, I, my big thing was, we've gotta talk, once we've realized that we didn't even have the money, and it needed to be appropriated and all of that, that we couldn't use the same fund. Um, it was one of those that we still, it would, it's still nice to see what we can do, but what does that look like in the future? Are we planning, do you guys wanna go this route? So this is kind of the other part of why we brought this to you guys' attention, because employees are gonna need to be involved in this. So, we are not just talking about a tractor, we are talking about a tractor, a team of people. So, this is the time, we are gonna be starting to talk about budget here very shortly. Um, so this is something that I asked him, I, 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 you know, Brian had brought it to our attention, and then JP is like, okay, I know about this stuff, so bringing him involved, because you, this is, this is an option. I mean, this is something that, do you guys even want to entertain it? So, that's what, without going any further, that's kind of what this was for tonight, to see where, where you guys were.
I, I think that we should, this is only part of the option.
Correct. There's a lot of moving parts to this one, yeah.
What do you have to say? Jack?
Yeah.
I, my suggestion is that as we work on the budget for twenty-four this fall, that staff do some homework to find out what is necessary and appropriate for maintenance department, so that we can better make decisions and put our dollars to use wisely. We don't even know what the maintenance department has to be yet, okay?
Yeah, I mean, Chipper, you probably use the gator to pull the logs out of the, the lakes some, right? Okay, yeah. Yeah, and then when we pay the guys, actually, I got a pretty reasonable rate to do it, it's cuz he comes down with.
Yes.
Eight guys and.
Bigger equipment.
And, and four dumpster-type things, and, yeah, we pay him five grand, and he takes out eight, or half a dozen, I guess that's less than eight trees. Um, but, I mean, he does, he pulls out a lot larger ones.
Yes.
Which is, having the equipment's great, but it's having the twelve guys to do this every day and know how to do it.
Yes.
Yeah, he'll pull the sandy trees, and I, I worry about the water.
Standing on the surface, yeah.
Well, like, the ones that are falling down along the banks and.
The other thing is, as soon as you pull those out, now the tree behind it's falling. You might as well just knock the one behind it over.
Right.
Because once you pull that one out, all, any, any erosion control that roots has is gonna die, you might as well just take them all out.
Well, restore when we get them, and now the trees are leaning already as it is.
You could lean the, you could cut off the roots.
I did that for one of them down there.
Yeah, root, sunny root, root balls still do provide some angry effects.
Even if it's tilted out, I figure it's out of public, you know, where they won't mingle back there, so I left the tree.
I mean, once things are more, once things are more stable, some good ground cover goes a long way. Virginia creeper is my recommendation.
Money that we haven't appropriated, but it's.
I think that's.
The tip money is something.
It's true. If we don't do anything with it, is it depreciating, and now you can reinvest it, what's?
It just falls back into the general fund.
Streets, phase in streets.
So, yeah.
Is, is there undue opportunity costs for not using the money appropriated for the truck that's sitting in the street fund?
But the street fund can't be used to buy the tractor, because it's not doing work on the street.
The question is, we are, we are, we are at this moment choosing not to spend money on the truck.
Understand.
So now we have that money that is sitting unutilized.
It will, it can be used to repair streets. That's it.
Let's repair some streets.
I think we have plenty of those to do. And the twenty twenty-four, is it expected to be very expensive to get those jobs done?
Yeah, uh, the estimates that Flickinger has tossed out to us on, uh, Monvera Lake section, seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars now. We were only planning about two hundred and forty to, or so, a year ago.
Yeah, well, it hasn't been done in, like, twenty-five years, right, so.
So, we're, we're looking for more money to be able to do the streets that we gotta fix.
Okay, so I think on this, it's, it's currently tabled, so at this point, I would bring it, if you guys wanna start talking about it in, for the budget for next year, or, you know, maybe it goes back to Jason's committee to discuss what, cuz that's in yours, correct? What does the maintenance department look like? What does that move forward? And then they can bring it back to you guys here in the next couple months, if it means there's something smaller, nothing, another lawnmower.
Yeah, I mean, I know we were, I mean, we, we decided basically two years ago we wanted to do our own maintenance. Now, this is a different board than there was two years ago. I'm still fine for doing our, our different maintenance, and just to say one last time, until we have that department built, I don't think we need to start buying the tools for them, because then we just have tools waiting for a person, and that's just waste, waste.
But there is, there is need time, right?
Yeah, there is.
This is not a thing that we're just gonna walk over to home evening and buy.
But we kind of need to have the structure and the thought of, and, you know, as I say, a barn for it to be before we open the door to the barn and let it out.
Right, we, we just, we, but again, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, we can make plans and execute plans simultaneously.
Yes. All right, do we have anything next on there, cuz I do have a list of things that don't take in seconds.
That was the end of our new business and old business, so, we are still in new business, I shouldn't say the end. That was the only thing on there for new business, so if you have more new business, you belong to it.
No, it's sort of old.
Okay.
Cuz I think all of mine have been talked about.
Okay.
Are we good? Is anybody over here? I think you just have to move your hands, like.
No, you have to go down and.
Leaf bid and trash bid will be hitting the, um, bid department on the sixteenth of May. It'll be advertised three straight weeks, vote for them. So, if anybody has any questions, you'll see it. Someone will try and get those readings out of there much earlier to see.
So, is this the mall?
Um, there was a, there was an email that was sent out to code enforcement, and I know you would have responded to it as well. Um, John just sent it over there when I got, I don't have that outcome, because that was the last segment of that, John just sent it over there.
Remind me.
Which one I talked about?
Um, the first one.
Yes.
Wasn't a letter issued previously about that tree?
Absolutely, so I assume that has nothing to do with us at this point.
The question came up today. What, what happens when someone does not follow, you know, we sent them a letter, what happens?
So, in, so in this.
Yeah, this is different.
So, yeah, and I, and I may, I may not, I don't know if I solved this specific issue. So, let's just say we, we have an example where we have a tree, since we're talking trees, and it's a hazard tree. We deemed it a hazard tree in some form, because it's probably hanging over a pathway or a rideaway, it's gonna fall, and someone possibly hurt someone.
This one, I believe, was not, the, the problem with this one was, correct me if I'm wrong, it technically was not, that was the fight, is we shouldn't have gotten involved initially because it was on her property, it was not affecting anybody, and it's a civil case. So I just wanna make sure you're on that note.
Right, right, I understand.
This one would have been more of a.
So, so, yeah, so, so in this particular case, so, so where we have authority, if someone doesn't do what they're supposed to, if we have an emergency situation, we will act upon it to remove it and then handle it appropriately, so it could be leaned, we could be poured over it, there could be a number of things.
This one we could.
If we have something different, we may have to get an injunction to handle something specific with a zoning case, too, if that's another point.
Larry, all those are actions that you would think, when the tree is a danger to village property, village right of property.
Not your neighbor's tree might.
Not, not, not a resident's property.
What about like garbage cans, like, we sent them a letter and say, hey, you know.
He follows up.
So, so we have to yank them into mayor's court and start that process there, yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
So if it's, if it's a multiple, he does, he, he has his letters, he follows up with either, whether it deserves a number two letter, um, or a fine, whatever it is, and then he does follow up with them. With trash cans, the problem is, they're gone usually the next day, um, however.
Some other situation that we're thankful to deal with.
Sometimes it happens multiple times, and then same thing with the grass, I mean, we give them usually that one warning per year. Um, I think it's one warning per year, but we have somebody that gets their, yeah, as soon as they, they do it, and then they get their warning, and then they're done. So, yes, we do follow up, this particular one, I don't believe we got involved in it, and it must be a civil case, I know nothing about it, other than emailing you guys receipt.
Does, does John, if we follow up on something legally, does that go on John's report?
Correct. Well, I don't know, Bill, how often, I don't know exactly what he reports, but it's a public record, he does keep all of his stuff in there, and if I go in there and say, what's going on with this one, he can pull a file. Every, he has a file pattern, if you don't know, he has a file pattern of everybody's addresses, and the updates go in, then those particular files, is the easiest way to say it.
Someone resented me this, I don't, I don't believe I have this email, it was sent very recently.
It was very recently, it was people who were having a tree dispute that doesn't really affect us, and then the neighbor leaving trash out, and then it gave him into their yard.
Okay, yeah.
Code enforcement was called, he went out.
And not as much as I know, okay.
Yeah, and that's pretty much what happened, that's, that's.
Okay, I just wanna keep on talking, but.
Yeah, so just so you guys.
Uh, he went out, code enforcement went out next day.
Okay, so, um, last but not least, the shelter update, a couple of you guys have already heard this from last night. Um, the concrete I'm expecting to be poured next week. Um, and then usually about two weeks after the concrete is poured, we should be able to, after the concrete's poured, I call them the farm people, and then they order the color of the shingle, or the roof, and all that stuff, but they don't do it till after the concrete's done. So, usually about two to three weeks after the concrete has settled, they will come out and put that in. Just so you guys are aware, we did go with twenty by thirty-two for the actual shelter, and the concrete will be twenty-six by thirty-eight. All within everything that has been talked about from day one. All, all walls are open, there is not gonna be a back wall in anything. Um, no, we did, there was quite a few people that did not like the idea of having a back wall in there, it is what it is.
Who are those people?
Uh, the, and, and some of them, they expressed their concerns, um, so, and I actually like the open one. I mean, I see them all the time when I go to Hoover, so this is just a basic pole, there's eight poles and a roof, and that's as good as it gets, that's all this ever was intended to be. Um, and my goal is to potentially bring this back to you guys for six picnic tables. Um, I would prefer them to be the metal ones that are heavier to move, um, but in the event that we either just don't have the funds, and I, not that we don't have the funds, but if we decide we're just gonna put wood ones or something in there for this year and do something else next year, whatever, but. The goal is to do six of them.
What are you gonna do to the concrete from being, you know, vandalized, so to speak?
So, that's great that you actually mentioned that, I was going to talk to Chief about it, I was having, having the police department go around much more often for twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
I must give credit to, well, Chipper for that question I had, I did not think of myself.
I actually did, and I mentioned it last night, and thought that I would just advise Chief when it's gonna be done, and see if we can get a little more attention to it, because yes, that is a concern of mine.
I mean, I was gonna go ahead and mark my own name on it, you know, but, but that's not now.
Um, did, did I mention this, and then we have a conversation about possibly pouring a small pad over there to put a.
So you would have killed my budget.
On.
No, you would have killed my budget.
For an event or something, right?
And it's not an option.
Uh, in the event that we're gonna need that for, we're probably gonna close the street, the ultravista connector.
We'll put it in.
And you put in the street.
I like the idea, and maybe that's something later on down the road, and I'm not trying to circumvent certain.
No, and that's just my thought, it's bigger than the important part, you're closing that street.
Don't close that.
We're keeping it under fifty, right? Right, I don't wanna add to that.
Get one after that.
I just wanna know.
Anyone put one more pound of concrete in the road?
Yeah, now next year, you wanna add to it.
Yeah, different project.
Have had it, absolutely. Event, event pad.
And when most people don't want our lights and our drinking, but they just want, so, I mean, and we, so we're not really, we don't, we don't do that.
With no walls, you have a problem with putting a lot of it anyways.
Bathroom in a restaurant's back, what, you don't hunt at the table, in the bathroom.
If we decide we wanna add a family.
Uh, anything else, maybe, southern?
No, that was it.
Alright, I motionally adjourned. Alright, see you on next Thursday.
Are you hot next Thursday?
Is it, is it next Thursday? Two Thursdays.
Two Thursdays.
Wow, Thursday.